Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Bronxville. I'm Stuart McIntosh and I will be chairing tonight. I'm joined by my colleagues Charlie Law, John Brown, Greg Jacknow, Janie Regan, and our superintendent Paul Taft. I believe Christina's not attending?
No.
Okay. So just as a reminder, approval of variances requires a majority vote. So all five of us will be voting tonight. To obtain a variance, you need three approvals. We have two applications, Iona University and Three Forte. We'll start with Iona. And before we get into it, this application went before the planning board. And I'm going to ask Paul Taft to walk us through exactly, outline the approvals so forth at the planning board level. It's both design review and planning board. There were two meetings. Paul?
Good evening. Okay, so like Stuart said, this application is two signed permits, of which it was amended when it came to your board with the, what I'll call, lawn sign. But generally speaking, signed permits go to Design Review Committee and they produce a report, which they supply to the planning board of their findings of the application based on the design and the criteria. And then the planning board votes whether to approve, disapprove, or approve with modifications. In this case, there were certain items that needed to have a variance. And the planning board has referred this to your board without prejudice, but they did, you know, wish that you would review the minutes or the report from Design Review and the planning board. So what I wanted to do is just go over the parts that pertain to the variance so you understand exactly what parts are the variance that you need to approve, disapprove, or approve with modifications. So if we refer to the plan review comments sheet dated May 10th, there are a list of six items. And I would say number one, number two, or I'm sorry, number one, number three, number five, and number six were approved or don't require a variance. They were approved by Design Review Committee, though, those items. So number two, and I refer to Planning Board Rules. It is available on the website under the Design Review Committee website, webpage. We have the Planning Board Regulation Number Four dated October 14, 2002. So we also have the sign code, but we refer to the rules for the signs because it goes into more detail. So number two is PBR is the Planning Board Rules, D1, which addresses the number of signs each business establishment can have. And I might just go back and comment that the college is a little unique in that the sign rules seem to be more focused on the downtown and the business district. But it is, you know, a business operation and they want to have signs. So you should keep that in mind. So the number of signs, what came from planning was that they wanted to have the two banners on the front of the building. So that's one more sign then is allowed, as well as the lawn sign would be an additional sign. So you would be looking to give them a variance of two signs, two additional signs than what's And then number four is PBR-D4B, and that's the type of signs. And for the banners, the signs are prohibited on a building facade. And so that would be the variance you'd be looking for for that, as well as the banner at the conservatory. That's not your typical banner as well. So you would look to give a variance for that. And then I've also added a few items for the lawn sign. One thing I didn't see on the plans for that, and it may be there and the applicant certainly could weigh in on it, is whether there is any lighting proposed for that or not. And then again, the number of signs, I would be adding one sign to the proposed. And then PBR-D3 references the location of signs. And the sign code or the rules look to have the signs on a building, not on a front lawn or in the front. So you would be looking to give them a variance for the location, not on a facade. And then if you go to PBR-DA...
Hey, Paul?
Yes?
Just one question. It sounds like there are a lot of items that are on the agenda. We're only voting once, right? Every one variance covers all of these things? Or are we voting four times or three times?
Um...
Or is there no point to that if we...
Well, I mean, you know, if you, depending on how you work the resolution...
Yeah.
You could, you know, state that it's as I described.
Okay, so that's up to Stuart.
Right?
You got it. Yeah, I agree. I think we should.
Okay, so PBR-D1, oh no, I'm sorry, 5A is for the height. So the maximum height of letters can be 12 inches and it exceeds that. So that would be the other, the other variance.
Wait, Paul, but that was approved by Design Review. That's not listed here as required by our committee.
Okay. You're right. Yeah, it has the ability to be approved by DRC.
Right, so we don't have to...
There's no variance.
Yeah, no variance required.
You may want to just make a statement on it because it, you know, it wouldn't hurt to make a statement that it's okay or whatever. They do have the option of that. The code says that it can't exceed that. That's your option, really.
Okay. Right. Now, just clarification on number four. That again relates to the request to replace the banner at Stein Hall, the Concordia banner with a Iona University banner, same size, correct?
Right.
And we'll be voting on, that's number four.
4B, yes. And that's...
For sign panels?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Because they do have, actually, we did find they had a previous approval for that banner.
Which was back in, what, 2006, right?
I don't know when it was.
Yeah, 2006, yeah.
Quite a while ago.
Okay. But to replace it.
Really, you would be good just to approve it as the new sign.
Okay.
And I think that's it, unless you folks have any other questions.
You guys good with that?
Yes.
You got all that?
Yep.
Certainly, you can ask me back again.
Okay, good.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Paul. That was helpful. So who is going to be presenting on behalf of the university?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Annie Klein. I'm an associate at Del Bello Tonell and Weingarten Weizen Whitaker in White Plains. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Iona University. I also have with me Mary Claire Riley and Joe Casaldo from Iona University to answer any questions if I can. So we're here tonight as Mr. Taft went through the variances pretty extensively. This is for the campus. That was the former Concordia College campus that has been recently acquired by Iona University. We're referring to these signs, I'll just go through the signs if that's easier. We're referring to these signs as the FETH Administration Hall banners. And these require the area variances to be on the building facade, as well as to have more than one sign on the White Plains Road Street facade. In addition, we've proposed the, yes, this ground sign or the lawn sign with landscaping. And this sign will be lit.
It will be lit.
In addition, we're seeking to replace the Concordia College banner across the street on the Stein Hall Conservatory. And all these signs are consistent with the Iona University colors and the signage at their new Rochelle campus. And so really, we're seeking these signs as an identification. We respectfully submit that the sign regulations don't contemplate a college campus and the need to identify the buildings, the campus itself, to the public, to students, to visitors, to the college.
Okay, that answers my question. I mean, I know what the main Iona sign is to identify that building as an Iona building, right?
Right.
These other ones are simply to identify the buildings as specific music buildings or art buildings or something.
Right, Concordia Conservatory building, exactly.
And what signs is going to be lit or proposed to be lit?
The ground sign, the Iona University lawn sign.
And how will the lights appear?
Let me get Joe Casaldo.
Hopefully not like the ones on Pondfield Avenue, right?
No, no, no.
Good.
All right, Joe Casaldo.
Because otherwise, it's a definite no.
No. It's actually, I could show Paul already, it's very low voltage lighting that's going to be behind and underneath those lawn letters. So just give it that illumination up behind the letters where you can see at night. Nothing, no neon, not very bright, just low lighting, low voltage lighting.
And when I was rereading these minutes from the planning board and design review, they've mentioned future possible signs. Are these the only signs you think you'll end up putting up here?
Right, as of right now, yes, these are the only signs we are looking at.
As of right now? Do you anticipate other ones down the road, though, possibly?
I do not.
I don't.
I don't have confidence to say we're not planning for that. On 22, basically.
Yeah, just right there, okay.
And to illuminate the sign, how many lights do you...
On the plans, I think it says eight, seven or eight, I just have to look.
Okay.
I think it's one, actually, one light apparatus per letter, illuminated underneath and behind. Give you the page number and check the type of lighting there also. Actually, on the last page of the plans, bottom right-hand corner.
I'm sorry?
It's on the last page of the plans, bottom right-hand corner, number six, sign lighting. I apologize, I don't have my glasses, so I can't really read the school print.
And what is the height of that sign on the ground?
So it's approximately 16 inches.
16 inches, okay. And can you discuss a little bit about the landscaping around the ground sign, what the plan is?
Sure. So they're maintaining the existing trees that are in that area. And we're just creating, as you can see from the...
Oh, it's, I'll tell you what. Oh, I don't know.
but it does say that it's just one light per front.
So they're, yeah, they're preserving the trees in the area and adding a perennial garden and some shrubbery behind the sign, a little bit of plantings in front of the
So you may want to add on to the additional signs, the additional lighting that they're
sign, and then the shrubbery behind the sign.
requesting.
Again, what is the number of lights, just...
So that will help the sign stand out.
Could you please point that out again?
Okay, so the trees are remaining?
I can't find it.
Yeah, so on, I believe it's Exhibit B of the, of... Yes.
No additional trees are being planted?
Um, no, just the shrubbery.
Okay.
I have that Exhibit B.
What is the life of these banners?
Exhibit three, yeah, so it's the last, the last page site details, L-500.
In other words, how often do these have to get replaced?
And then there is a note, six sign lighting.
What's your experience been?
We've tested out different types of fabric to see which ones last the longest. It's on the bottom right. And it says, "Light fixtures shall be lighting Airstar Integral Black Color with AD Cap for Dark Sky Compliance." The ones on our, on our new Rochelle campus, we update it, I believe, about every four
The last page of Exhibit B?
years. But we have no interest in having faded banners or things that don't look good. Yes, L-500, yes, site details.
At the very bottom corner, John, the corner...
So, yeah, there's that.
Yep.
Where is it?
Oh, here, okay. Paul?
Yeah?
Tree protection.
Oh, no, that's shrub protection.
Yeah, right, underneath tree protection.
Tree protection.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, sign lighting, okay. And again, the number of lights?
I don't see where it says number.
It shows little dots.
So it looks like they're attached to the...
I think there's four.
So I think there's four as well. It looks like they're attached, if you can see, these posts here that hold up the sign. There's one per post.
All right.
Oh, up here, these are... So is the request to have four lights? I just want to be clear on that.
Yes, I believe that is the request, yes.
I'm assuming as a practical matter, the university has an interest in lighting the entire sign and it's a long sign.
Right, right, right.
So if you had one light in the middle, that would look weird.
Right.
It wouldn't even light it up.
Yeah.
Right, it would, yeah.
I'd prefer to have it look better, even if there are more lights.
Exactly.
Long as they're low voltage.
Right, which, yes, they will be.
Let me open it to the public. Any questions? Comments? Paul, anything else from your end? Okay.
Yeah, I think it should be specified, the number of lights and that they're going to be low voltage.
Okay, whatever that means.
So it's going to be four lights?
According to the plans, four lights. We can confirm that with the architect.
Will the architect be able to confirm it tonight?
No, unfortunately, it's just a...
Because, you know, one of the...
I'd like to have the number.
The board may want to consider just to approve, approve how many signs can be lit and then let planning take care of that, but, you know, that's...
Well, we could make a recommendation.
Yeah.
But I'd like to get at least solidified what's...
Good idea, right.
If you look in this picture, there's a symbol for decorative sign light. And then... Exhibit B, Greg?
This is L-200. This is a simplified page. So you can see one, two, three, four. They're hidden, they're hidden in the bushes.
We're smacking these things, sorry.
There are four, four lights.
We just found it on the plans.
Okay. Will Design Review need to review the lighting and the signage on the ground?
Yes, being that they haven't looked at that and Design Review meets the week before planning, so it makes sense for them to go before that.
Right, right. So just so we're, I want to make sure my committee is clear, is whatever is approved here, if the lighting is approved, Design Review has to also approve it, send that to Planning Board, number one. Any other, sorry?
So really, the variance is for the number of signs being illuminated. That's the variance that you're looking for?
No, I understand that, but I just, I want to make sure my colleagues are clear that what, if we approve it, what the next step is.
Yeah.
Because Design, that's the one item, Design Review, if it is approved, will have to opine on.
That and the lawn sign.
With the lawn sign and the lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is it the lawn sign that's the only thing?
Right. And then, Paul, again, just to be clear, and if the balance of this is approved, again, that has to go back to Planning Board, because they did not approve it.
Correct.
Okay, just, everyone's clear on it?
So now, one clarification, if it's just one sign that's illuminated, then they wouldn't need a variance for that.
Right.
Okay.
But again, you can, you know, give your opinions about all the benefit the planning board can bring their decision.
All right, well, let me take a crack at a resolution. Okay. So let me propose a resolution that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Bronxville grant to the Iona University the following variances. We're going to combine these. Variance number one is in connection with PBR-D1, which, under code, only allows one sign per facade. Applicant is requesting two signs for the facade plus a third sign on the ground with four lights. That's one variance. Second variance is PBR-D4. The applicant is requesting the replacement of the banner at Stein Hall with their own banner, same size as the existing banner. Think I got them? Okay, let me start with you, Charlie.
I understand why the code is in place, but I also understand that, A, the university is a much different animal than a residential neighborhood. I understand the reasons for your wanting to put up the signs now. And I also believe that one of these is really just a minimus. You're just trying to replace one that's already there with another one. Given all of that, given the fact that I think we want to welcome Iona into the community, I would vote in favor of the variance.
Great, thanks, Charlie. John?
I'm also in favor of the variance with the one proviso that the one sign that is going to be illuminated is the lawn sign and it's going to be low voltage.
Greg?
I approve.
Janie?
I also approve, and mostly also because of the way Paul explained it, it's true, this is not downtown. This is a big piece of property. And two signs look better than one, much more balanced, so I think it's a better idea. I approve.
Good, okay. And I agree with my colleagues, the variance is approved, and welcome to Bronxville. Thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Okay, so let's move on to Three Forte. Who is presenting? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Sean Jansky. I'm a landscape architect, here with the homeowner, Norba, and my associate Juliana. We are here requesting a variance from the limitation in the code of a total fence height or wall height at the property line of six foot six. This is a new home construction. The height of the house and the yard has been elevated because of a very high water table. And in order to create a level area for the kids and around the backyard, there's a wall that's been installed. And we would like to put a four-foot fence right on top of that wall for sort of a nice custom clean look, instead of setting that new fence back from the wall, because we'd like to really enjoy as much of the property as possible. So we're here requesting a variance for that total height of wall plus fence. There's a lot of existing plantings that you can see in what's been submitted. Additional plantings are also going to go in to further kind of screen and buffer this combination of wall and fence. It'll be a two-sided fence, which means it'll be attractive on both sides. The neighbors have voiced their support. Really, there's two neighbors that would be affected, and both of those neighbors have voiced their support of the application, so we don't think there's a real negative impact. It's also really on the back portion of the property, so it's not visible or an impact to passersby or from the street. That's kind of a quick summary of what we're here requesting.
Could you, again, show us the landscaping around the fence? What is planned?
Sure. One of the plans show that. So that there, you can see on the top of the screen, there is an existing row of evergreens. And then on the right portion of the screen are a proposed hedge of laurels, laurel evergreen shrubs to go along that property line.
Because it's a, is it a metal...
of a very high water table, and in order to create, uh, a level area for the kids and around the backyard, um, there's a wall that's been installed, and we would like to put a four-foot fence right on top of that wall for sort of a nice custom clean look, instead of setting that new fence back from the wall, because we'd like to really enjoy as much of the property as possible. Um, so we're here requesting a variance for that total height of wall plus fence. There's a lot of existing plantings that you can see in what's been submitted. Um, additional plantings are also going to go in to further kind of screen and buffer, um, this combination of wall and fence. It'll be a two-sided fence, which means it'll be attractive on both sides. Um, the neighbors have voiced their support. Really, there's two neighbors that would be affected, and both of those neighbors have voiced their support of the application, so we don't think there's a real negative impact. Um, it's also really on the back portion of the property, so it's not visible or an impact pat, to passersby or from the street. Um, that, that's kind of a quick summary of what we're here requesting.
Could you, um, again, uh, show us the landscaping around the fence? What is planned?
Sure. Wanted the plan to show that. So that, there, you can see on the top of the screen, there is an existing row of evergreens, uh, and then on the right portion of the screen are a proposed, uh, hedge of laurels, laurel, uh, evergreen shrubs to go along that property line.
Because it, it's a, is it a metal fence that you...
Wood.
Wood.
Oh, it is wood?
Wood fence on top of, uh...
Okay. Oh, it is wood, okay.
So the fence that's there now, it shows on the, that's just temporary?
That's a temporary fence.
Ah, okay.
This'll be much more attractive.
Right.
Much more attractive, and, and really of less, less height than that fence, too. That's just temporary during construction.
Correct.
It would be replaced with a fence that would go right on the wall, even though if we moved the fence in, we, we could do that without a variance. It, it, we think it's a very small variance. We're asking to maximize the space and to have it be sort of custom-built on the wall.
How will it be fastened to the wall?
Uh, core drilled and with hydraulic cement right into, with steel pins. So it's, it's sort of the traditional strong way of attaching it to a, a wall.
Is that wall pre-existing in the level, or was that created as a result of the construction? I, it is a big, there's a lot of construction going on.
Yeah, it's the ladder. It, it, it was created as part of construction.
Okay, and why was it created?
It's a very high water table, so the house is a little higher, and we've graded and, and merged the new elevation of the house to the ground, and that's why that's all been leveled out.
Was the pool there before, or was that put in?
No, the pool's new.
Okay.
And again, what, the, the height, four feet, what's the basis for that? That's required by code.
It's a pool, it's a pool barrier minimum height.
Yes, okay.
And, and the way the wall is, I mean, I went over and looked at the property. It's a, it's a higher wall from the neighbor's side. When you're on your side, it's not that high, really. So when you're on a four, it won't always even look like 10 feet, right? It'll look like smaller from your side, I would think, right?
Yeah, you'll only, you'll only see a small portion of it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
But you are, again, planning landscaping on, um, the, I guess that would be the east side of that, or on your neighbor's side?
Yes.
Because that's where, that, to your point, that's where the height differential is the most noticeable.
And they're supportive of this, and they...
There's, there's already a screening there on their property.
Right.
It exists. There's a two-foot barrier in between both of our properties that we thought would be, well, that's not being utilized right now for anything. If you blow the, it would, people have attention, you have a nice row of additional screening that would be to their benefit, aesthetically, um, and also towers, sort of, to maximize the amount of space that we have on our, our...
You can see in one of the photographs, uh, that, that existing, oh, I guess it's, uh...
That's the one.
Yeah.
So I see the wall goes up right there, right where, and then does it continue to go up in the back, or does it stay that?
No, it stays that.
Okay. So when you put four feet on top of that, that's not...
Which is lower than that chain link fence.
Right.
So it'll drop down.
Right.
So there really is good screening, and anywhere there might be a little hole, it's to both sides' benefit to plug the hole, so.
And I'll just, if I may, this, this project, especially on, on this side, we're very mindful of the aesthetics, um, to our neighbor, that wall that you see. It didn't have to look like that purposely. Put a lot of time and effort and money into making something that would be aesthetically pleasing to them. Um, and so we wanted to, you know, clearly continue that along that wall and make it truly platter by having additional screening in between, just sort of.
Because that's, that's their front yard, and your front yard, the front, yeah, yeah. Right, so there won't be a fence there. Yeah, it's the noxes.
Are there any drainage issues or considerations here?
No.
I mean, is there anything being done to...
Well, the...
Or is there not anything needed to be done?
So, not related to why we're here.
No, I understand that, but...
We have, we have overran, uh, drain in the property. We spent, you know, several, several hours with Mr. Fredericks and, uh, and Bill and Ivy, um, to make sure that, that this entire property has enough drainage.
Okay.
That's why we preserve trees on the, on the western edge.
Right.
And have, you know, more coltext than necessary along the entire front side of the property, to be, to be... So we didn't prevent it tonight because it wasn't part of this.
Not part of the project.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, Paul, it, there's a, a plan as well that shows, and there's going to be coltext in the, in the rear yard, uh, as well as the front yard.
Oh, okay.
So this fence that you're going to do goes down the side, around the back, and
then does it, it doesn't come up the other side, it's just...
It doesn't come up the other side, no.
So how do you protect the pool?
Right there.
Oh, right there, I see. It comes up, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you get it just around the pool that way.
Paul?
Yes, I, I'd like to just point out that it has been my determination with the, the fence height code, uh, the way it's written at this point, is if the fence is set back from the wall, then I don't, uh, you know, cumulatively add the two heights. If the fence is on the wall, then I do count it as one height, so that's, that's the difference.
So if it was away from the wall, how high would it have to be?
It could be six and a half.
Six and a half.
And he was only doing four, so we, we wouldn't need...
And I'll just point out, I'm sorry, I'll just point out also, this is a pool barrier for the pool area.
Right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess there's no one else from the public, unless they're hiding behind one of those benches. Okay, so let me, uh, propose a resolution that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Bronxville grant to the residents three-fourthel a variance from section 310-dash-nine-D4. Fence height allowed is six foot six, proposed is nine foot six inches, variance requested is three feet. Uh, Greg, I'll start with you.
You have the support of your neighbors. I approve.
Janie?
I agree. I think the people most impacted are your neighbors to the right, and they want it, and that's fine, and it's going to all be screened, so I approve as well.
John?
I think, uh, the owner went at great lengths to appease everyone. I think he did a great job, and I approve overwhelmingly.
Charlie?
Yeah, I agree. I, I vote, yes.
And I agree with my colleagues, uh, so variance is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good, okay.